Good morning. Thank you for joining today's Howard County Board of Education Candidate Forum. This event is hosted by Howard County Chinese School and also their affiliated YAM and visited program members. I'm Lei Zhen, I'm one of the Howard County Chinese School Board members, and I'm going to, together with Jeff Shang, we're going to moderate today's forum. On behalf of Howard County Chinese School, welcome you all to this candidate forum to get to know all of these candidates. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you Lei. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everyone.
Thanks for coming.
My name is Jeff Shang. I've been volunteering in Howard County Chinese School for 19 years. So in year 2003, we had about 100 students. Two years ago, before pandemic, we had 1,700. So from 100 to 1,700, we had a big jump, right? And a lot of people, a lot of you have contributed. So I just want to say, Board of Directors, Executive Committee, EDA, teachers, parents, students, volunteers, thank you very much for the effort. Judy, Ling Feng, Julie, Dan, and Meg, thank you for coming in this rainy day. Appreciate it. And how you can tell, but you can tell by looking at our hairstyle. We have no hair. So it's justified because I'm a lot older than him, but what happened to you, young man? You work hard. He works so hard. So we will give you guys easy questions because we have a friend in the crowd, right? And you are going to get the same easy questions today. It's your lucky day today. All right, back to the topic. Howard County is a great place for many, many, many things. And Board of Education plays a major role. And education is very important here, right? So the Board of Education is responsible for setting up a lot of rules and regulations that impact our lives, our kids' lives, and our property values, right? So Board of Education is extremely important. And we wish you all good luck in the two elections coming up. Preliminary in July 19th and the final election in November 8th. We wish you the best. Then in the meantime, regardless, the outcome of the election, whatever that is, we appreciate you guys committed and determined to put forth your time and efforts for this community. We respect that, we admire that, and we thank you for that. Now I'm going to invite Dr. Lee, the Chair of the Board, to come up to give a few remarks.
Good morning again, for joining us in this forum. This forum will be one of the events to celebrate the AAPI Month. We all know the purposes of the AAPI Month is to celebrate the AAPI contribution to the United States history and to promote the visibility of the AAPI ethnic group. In my mind, the best way to promote our visibility is to exercise the voting right that the Constitution and this democratic system grant us. So this event will provide a platform to connect the candidates with voters like us. So I hope after this event, we all know our candidates better. And I also hope that the event is going to promote and encourage us go to vote. So as a nonprofit organization, the Howard County Chinese School is non-political. So with that, the school does not take any position or preference on any of our candidates. I know Jeff made a couple of jokes. Although Ling Feng is our friend, but we don't take any preference over any of them. So with that, I turn the floor over to our moderator. Thank you all.
All right, and it's your turn.
Well, thank you so much for hosting us today, and I appreciate everybody coming out. Hope to get to talk to each one of you before we leave today. My background is one that is from high school to work. When I was graduating high school, my family was divorcing and our home was lost, so I had the option of work or college. College was not an option for me at the time, so I worked. I never felt sorry for myself, I simply worked. And I was hired quickly by mortgage loan industry, and I did very well there. I took advantage of every opportunity to promote and learn. After my children were born, we opened our own business. My husband was in the retail clothing business, and we opened our own store from our kitchen table. We worked very hard, and we had many decisions to make to get that up and running, leasing, payroll, benefits, et cetera, merchandising. And long story short, we grew to 23 locations. And the point there really is, is that you have to make a lot of good common sense decisions and be resilient and accountable. So my service to the county is Planning Board, Howard County, Howard Community College Foundation Board, and Plan Howard 2030. And I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to work collaboratively with other board members to make sure we're focusing positively on improving our school and making sure that we're the best that we can be.
Thank you.
I think it's my turn. So my name is Ling Feng Chen. Right now I have three kids in the school system. They pretty much cover the rest of high school, and have my middle school, and have my elementary school. So I really have a very, very strong ownership, and I want to make a school better for all the students. Because I've been in the system, and I want the system really work for everyone. And as you may know, I'm an engineer by training. I always have a mindset, try to find the why and how, and how can we solve the problem? So that's bring me a mindset to the school system. How do we, you know, we have a lot of issue. So really, we need to find out, not just push the, you know, the problem down, or take the least resistant way to solve the problem. We need fundamentally solve the why that happened, and the really common solution, address it. So I kind of not happy about is, some of the solution coming up is very superficial, and we put it one group, again the other group. Can we make the pie bigger to accommodate everybody? Can we everybody contribute to make the school system better? So can we facing the problem right away and have an engineer mindset, try to find that this is the issue, we got to address it, not just avoid it? And my personal experience also more like a typical immigrant experience. I grew up in China, and in my family, I'm the first graduate, college graduate. I know it's not easy when you continue pushing the barrier and overcome the hardship to be the first one in your family to get a college degree, to get a math degree, and eventually got a PhD degree. I think we got to give our children a mindset, that's work hard, that's change ourself, you can do it, okay? We provide resources at the school as well as outside of school, make sure they can maximize their potential. That's our school's responsibility, that's our family's responsibility. So then...
Doctor, time is up.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you for hosting us today. I'm running for Board of Education because of my passion for education, particularly science education. I'm a scientist and a professor with a lifelong dedication to educating the next generation of science leaders and encouraging STEM experience and careers. I'm the mother of an eighth grader at Wild Lake Middle School and a first grader at Bryant Woods Elementary School. I'm running for the Board of Education because I want to ensure that Howard County maintains the highest quality education system. We need to ensure that every student has the best opportunity to learn and succeed in life. We currently don't have enough capacity, and development continues. We need new schools so that every child has a seat in a brick and mortar classroom instead of a portable. Increased capacity would greatly diminish the need for redistricting. And while we should not have schools with concentrations of poverty, we need the county council to use zoning and smart development to fix that problem, so the school system does not need to use redistricting to do it instead. We need appropriate school start times that align with our children's biological clocks. We have too many issues with safety and bullying in our schools affecting far too many children and families. We need to have safe and bully-free schools and support all students. We need to eliminate discrimination and bias in our schools. We need to address the learning loss that happened during the pandemic while ensuring we retain the highest quality teachers and staff. To this end, we need to use Recovery Act money to reduce class sizes, so teachers can do what they do best, which is teach our children and address learning loss. I'm running to advocate and affect change in these areas. I want to ensure that this work is done with excellence, integrity, and transparency and without outside influence. I will not take developer or dark money donations, and I do not have a political party affiliation for this nonpartisan position. Thank you.
To the school for hosting us here today, it's great to see everyone out on a rainy day. My name is Dan Newberger. My wife and I have two children in the Howard County schools, a sixth grader and a third grader, and I'm not going to embarrass them by saying they're sitting right over there. I grew up in the Chicago area, in a suburb that was similar to Howard County, and it had wonderful diverse public schools. And I'm a product of those public schools. My parents gave me the gift of going to great public schools, just like we all are giving our children that gift. And it prepared me well for challenges of life. I attended and graduated from the United States Naval Academy, served as a naval officer, went on to study public policy at the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. My wife and I came to Howard County for the same reason that so many of us do, is for the schools, for our children. I really believe strongly that everyone in this county wants the same thing. We want what's best for our kids. We want them to be safe and successful and happy. We disagree sometimes in the community about how to get there, but I think we all share that goal, and that's our strength. Professionally, I have worked as a management consultant, among other things, focusing on helping large complicated organizations to be successful, to achieve their mission efficiently, effectively, through strategic planning, organization design, performance management, and those are some of the tools I hope to bring to the Board. I have a few priorities, among them, we really need to focus on making sure every school, every student, every teacher has fully recovered from the pandemic. The pandemic is not over in our schools, the impact is there, the mental health of our children, the learning has been impacted. I also really want to make sure that we are investing in our teachers and our principals so that we build the schools we need, not just for today, but for the future, so that we can build innovative 21st century schools. Thanks so much.
I'm Meg Ricks. I've lived in the county since 2004. I have three children, a senior at Howard, an eighth grader at Elkhridge Landing, and a fourth grader at Elkhridge Elementary. I've been involved in advocacy and in education for many, many years. I've been a PTA president several years, treasurer, secretary, just about everything you can do. And I've been involved at the county level, serving on the Board of PTAC for four years, been here in this room before training other PTA leaders, speaking at the International Parent Graduation at Academy. It was a wonderful experience on behalf of PTAC. I wanted to run because I felt like my experience could be a benefit. I'm here for the kids, that's really what it is. I've been very passionate about overcrowded schools. I grew up in Chicago and went to very, very overcrowded schools, and it was a challenge. And I don't want that to be the fate that our kids here in Howard County face. That has really made redistricting and all that a huge challenge because we don't have the seats that we need. So my view is we need to work together to make sure that we can get things done. We're arguing about this and that issue, we're losing the focus that it needs to be about the kids, it needs to be about making sure they have the best education possible. Thanks.
And before we start, I know Ling Feng, you did not finish your thoughts probably because of the two minutes. So you have a lot of chances in the next hour. If you don't have, you can't finish then, you can stay here and talk to us.
I can talk.
All right, so go ahead Lei.
We do collect a lot of questions from the communities. We have so many we want to ask you, but we're going to pick the top of priorities first, but hopefully we have extra time, the audience can ask their question. So the first question, I think it would be good for us to understand better about the Board of Education function. So maybe each of us can tell us, do you understand the role of the roles and responsibility of the Board? And what is the role of the superintendent? If you can tell us about that, that would help, I think, the audience also to understand when they vote, what the expectation for each of the candidates. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, in some way, it's similar to our Chinese school. We have a Board, we have EC, so executive. So you know, the executive is more do the, you know, administration, the activities, but the Board is more supervised. But in a sense, HCTS is a huge, and almost $1 billion budget. So it's a huge responsibility, how do we spend the money in a right way? And the Board does not have its own, you know, taxing or the tech function. It's mainly communicated with the council, the county level, of how can we get the money and then distribute. So as I understand, probably a lot of all the parents, they have the time to do all the detail, but it's critical have the parents' family feedback reflect in the Board decision. And their decision is to reflect community, the diverse community opinion, and make a right decision. So the Board is a conduit, basically. So they have the money, how do we distribute to the school level? Then all the parents, the school, the staff, students, all the opinion, they collecting, and then try to talk to county executive and the Board. Maybe we need to spend the money more here and there. So it's a conduit function. It's definitely a very important position, because some of the, you know, like a school redistricting and SRO, other things, it's related to the school safety, related to each family, the student's health, mental health. So I think that's why we highly urge all the parents, try to speak out your opinion, and if you have a current issue, email the school board to have your opinion heard. Thank you.
Julie?
You're next, okay. Yes, so I thought that was a great description of the Board. So the way I understand it and look at it is that the Board of Education sets policies. They also, you know, help develop the budget, vote on the budget, they vote on the issues associated, you know, kind of liaison, liaising between the parents and the teachers and the students and the school system. And they have one employee who's the superintendent. So they say that frequently in the boardroom, is that they have one employee, the superintendent, and the superintendent is supposed to, you know, execute the plan that they set forth. So I think right now, they focus very well on policies and on the budget. There's a few things that I think that, you know, we could do better, and that I would really like to do better. So I just want to address those because I feel like one of the ways, one of their roles should be actually that liaison part with the families, with the parents, with the teachers. And I think they do a good job with the teachers' union, I think they do a good job with the organization that represents the principals. But I think oftentimes, I don't see enough communication with the families, and I don't see effective communication with the families. We get those really long emails, I'm sure you get those really long emails. They don't come at regular intervals, oftentimes they come kind of randomly. And I really think we need to have, you know, regular communication through a newsletter that's concise, that really hits home the key points. And I think we need that, not just from the superintendent, but I think we also need that with the Board. And I think the Board needs to have more opportunities for families to talk to them, all families, not just, you know, the families who have the time to volunteer in PTAC, or the PTA, or CAC, or any of these, you know, any of the CACs. And so I really do think that we need to do that better, and I think the Board needs to advocate better for the school system. So thank you.
So as you've heard, the Board, you know, owns the budget, they decide on the policies, approve the policies, and they oversee the superintendent. And the superintendent runs the day-to-day. He or she has a staff that, you know, sits in central office that provides resources and policies and support to the 78 school buildings we have across the county. One really important thing that the Board does though is, they set the vision, they set the big picture priorities through the superintendent. Organizations, institutions can become very insular, can become very focused on their own priorities and lose touch with the community, and that's what the Board is. They're our elected voice of the community, of the parents, to make sure that our values, our priorities are represented in the schools. And it's really important that they hold the superintendent accountable. That's a big piece, is accountability. Making sure that the superintendent at those meetings, when he promises a report on something or following up on something, that he delivers that back. And that's how the Board can make sure that the schools are moving in the direction that the community wants. And then the other side of accountability is accountability of the Board to the community. Making sure that there is, I think the most important thing is there's trust. And we've seen in the county, you know, sometimes a loss of trust over the past few difficult years. And you build trust through transparency, you build trust through integrity and through accountability. And that's really the role of the Board too, is to make sure that we have a culture of accountability in our schools, in the classrooms, in the principal's office, and in the central office, that we are doing everything we can to make sure our schools are moving ahead so that we're not settling for what's good enough right now, but that we're pushing the envelope. We are Howard County. Great schools is not good enough here, we need to have excellent schools, we need to have the best schools. And the Board can insist on that, that we can step on the pedal and drive towards that goal. And that's how I see the Board. Thanks.
Thanks, I appreciate my fellow candidates, some of the things they said, I would echo. But I personally see the Board as being the community's kind of piece of the school system in a way. The community elects the Board, the community comes before the Board, gives, you know, feedback, information, comes to hearings, tells what's going on within the schools on the ground. And the Board directs the superintendent to run the schools and give that feedback and that input, hopefully to get, you know, put into place to make things better. They're the ones that are directing the policy that every single employee at the school system has to follow. I've had the opportunity to serve on multiple policy review committees, and it's been a very educational process. I feel like I've learned a lot, getting to know some of the folks that work at the school system. I've been the policy chair for PTAC, so I've also been involved in kind of bringing that information back to our community and getting other people to serve. So I would put that I recommend to you, get on a policy review committee if you can, especially if it's a topic that you have, you know, background in or knowledge about, or just want to learn more about. They're always seeking people from the community, and there's specific seats that are given to different organizations that, you know, oftentimes don't go filled, so I'd encourage you to get involved there. And yeah, that would be my view as far as being on the Board. I would want to make sure that we're working together effectively. You know, we don't always all agree, and that's okay, but got to respect one another and listen, and I'm always going to be willing to listen to anybody, because you're all, you know, we're all one school system. So, thank you.
I agree with pretty much most of what has already been shared. Of course, the superintendent does report to the Board, and the Board oversees the superintendent. I think the liaison component is extremely important. Board members have, can be approached by and listened to by parents and community members is extremely important. One of the things that's a little, nobody else has brought up here about the Board is that the oftentimes four-four split, or the addition of the student member of the Board, and how that affects some of the voting that does take place, is a little bit challenging. And so that is not something that always, I think, works well for the county. But basically, policymaking is very, very important, and it's important that the Board work collaboratively together, even if there is disagreements or differences of opinion. It's good to have lots of differences of ideas to share and flesh out what is the best for the school system, to keep it moving forward, keep the school system strong, it's the greatest asset of our county, and we do have to constantly work at it. So that's the work of the Board. Thank you.
Learned quite a lot about yourself and also Board of Education. That knowledge certainly will help me and others to decide our votes. So thank you. Now I'm going to read you the second question, which will start with Julie. Is that okay with Julie?
Yes. Can I say no? No way that I said no.
If she didn't mean, I would take it. I mean, it doesn't have to.
Absolutely. If you decide to say no, you decide to say no. That's absolutely good. So Julie, starting with the event, the question is, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education and why? It's an easy question. I think I'll start.
Thank you for being here.
The first one is easy, because the last one, they have nothing to talk, and everybody covered.
So is there a particular issue that's important to me? I think, I mean, there are a lot of issues, like I listed them in my introduction that are really important to me, but I think though, one issue that really is probably the most important right now has to do with school capacity. We are lacking a lot of schools, right? And it just has all these downstream effects. You know, it has effects in that we have to do redistricting more frequently because so many of our schools are so close to being overcapacity. I think it's probably had huge effects during the pandemic. They discussed this in the boardroom with respect to when there was the outbreaks at the high schools before Christmas, that the student member of the Board brought up how crowded the cafeteria is because of overcrowding. Because yes, you can add portables to find more classrooms, but you can't add space in the cafeteria, and the auditorium, and the gymnasium, and places like that. It also, Dr. Wu brought it up, I think it was the last board meeting or maybe two ago, when there was the incident at Longreach that led to the lockdown, because the children that are in the portables cannot leave the portables. The children that are in the brick and mortar school can actually go to the bathroom, they can actually, you know, go to their next class if classes were to change. Those teachers have more resources. The teachers in the portables don't have those resources. It's interesting, when, you know, I lived in Rockville when there was the sniper incident, and at that time, they didn't allow children to be in portables because it was a risk due to the DC sniper. I can't imagine what we would do if that happened today, because there's no way we could put all of our kids into our brick and mortar classrooms. And as much as the Board says that for the operating budget, they will ask for what they need every year, and that's why they never get it, is because they ask for what they need. They do not do that for the capital budget, right? They did not ask this year for the seven new schools they need, and we need to do that. Thank you.
So there are a couple of big issues I think I'll talk about. First is the need, that we really need to make sure that every child in Howard County is getting what they need. Every child. And that means the resources and the opportunities. For some children, that means making sure that they're challenged enough, right? For other children, it's making sure they have enough support so they can get through. But every child has different needs, every child is in a different place, and we really need to make sure that we have the resources and the staff around them to make sure that they can get that. And that's really, that's really what it's all about, is making sure that those children are successful. is making sure that those children are successful, not just in school, but prepared to be successful in life. One of the areas where we're really falling short of resources, I'm sure you know, is both, you know, is mental health is one big issue. We don't have enough psychologists. We don't have enough social workers in our schools to help the kids the way they need to be helped. And this was true before the pandemic. And now, after three disrupted years, it's even more true. So that's one serious issue. And that brings up sort of a bigger issue of the staffing. We have amazing teachers in our county, and a lot of them are going to retire at the end of this year. And a lot of them are going to quit because it's been so stressful. And a lot of them are going to move to Montgomery County, where they'll make more money. We're seventh in the state in salaries for our teachers, which is shocking if you think about it. Why would a teacher come here if they could make more money in Montgomery or Anarundel or in the city? They wouldn't. Maybe once upon a time, they would have because Howard County was so great. But now, you know, that's not true anymore, which can coast on our legacy. So we really need to make sure we're investing in the next generation of teachers who are going to educate our kids, not just today, but tomorrow and in the years to come. The same for principals. We need to invest in the leaders of our schools. Make sure those bright teachers who are ambitious to become administrators get the training they need. It's a big transition from teacher to principal. But the principals, you know, you've dealt with them. They set the tone for the school. They set the culture. They hold their teachers accountable. Such a critical role. Thanks.
Thanks. I really appreciate what Julie and Dan brought up with overcrowding. That dimension definitely a big concern. And unfortunately, at Howard, there is nowhere else to put any more portables. It's, you know, the most are trouble overcrowding, and there just really is nowhere else to put. And that's the way that it's going in the whole county. We really need to make sure that we're fighting and advocating for what we need as far as the budget, for capital, our buildings, for maintenance, and for the operating, to have the materials that the teachers need, to have the staff that we need. We're facing all kinds of shortages, and we don't always see it every day. The kids come home and they, you know, how was school fine? They don't know what is going on because it's just normal to them. But I think a lot of people would be really shocked at the struggles that they're facing every day in the schools. Mental health, such a huge thing. I mean, that was my main thing, one of my main things before the pandemic. I went to PTA president's meeting with Borved, and the superintendent, it was, you know, March of 2020, I think. And I'm like, oh, I hope we're just not talking about COVID. I have other things I want to talk about. But that's all it became about because, you know, that's how it went. But a little did we know. But that's still, even more now, going to be something we're going to have to deal with. And other things that are really important to me, like making sure that we're helping every kid where they are. I just went through the college application process with my oldest, and it was a process, such a process. And being in, you know, groups, hearing from people across the country, bright kids, kids are doing super well, not being able to get into the colleges that they wanted to. We need to make sure, or people getting in and then, you know, failing out. We need to make sure everybody is prepared for the future. Thanks.
Well, I have a couple of issues also. And my main concern is making sure that we are focused on core education as some others brought up, just to make sure our students are properly prepared to move forward. Some of the report cards on the schools are not stellar reporting in terms of their, you know, hitting their potential. So that is something that we have to be concerned about, particularly based on the, after having gone through all of the COVID and so forth, the getting students up to speed due to the loss of learning is very, very important. But I believe first and foremost is we have to have, make sure that the education system in Howard County is truly focused on core education and providing for a bright future for all of our students. Of course, the overcrowding is a problem, and we do need to address that as well.
As the last one, since a lot of topics already touched, but I do have my personal perspective. Basically, during the pandemic, I hear the principal in my, at my school, six very good experienced teacher, they left. And they are my whole-room teacher, my daughter's and son's whole-room teacher. So that's a kind of very shocking to me. Just one school lost a sixth-grade teacher. I mean, it's the same in the building. You don't see the difference, but it's a crisis. So we really have to face that. The other thing, it's a, we moved to Howard County because my daughter goes to kindergarten. We want to go to school. She went from kindergarten to 10th grade. But from the 10, 11 years spare, I can tell the quality is going down. This is not good for me. I think we got to do something. We distracted by many other things we can adjust differently. For example, the school redistricting. I think that one is more about school capacity. And I'm an engineer who, my first job actually designed the admin school buildings. So I have, you know, I think we, if we determine to do that, we can do it. It's just priority. We need the right priority, make sure we have enough, not portable, I hate to say portables. We want to see the real school buildings safe and all of, you know, there's not a, extreme weather is more frequent than now. So there's no bathroom in the portable. So every time, I just very sad feel like, why? We are not removing, we're actually increasing every year, putting more portables. And I visit the Wild Lake Middle School. That's a, we already have some good example. It's just matter to replicate, make it go vertical or horizontal. So just increasing more capacity. And in my opinion, is it my timer? Yes. Thank you.
Before we start question number three, I just want to let the audience know we do have some piece of paper, cards and pens at the back. If you prefer to write your question on the piece of paper rather than stand up to ask a question, you can write it down and hand it over to our volunteers. So during the audience question session, you can get your question asked. So now we go to third question, so we'll start with Dan, right? You know, the rule. So the third question, I think some of you already touched upon is regarding the school budget. So what are your thoughts on the current proposed budget for our school district, who we heard there could be some reduction? So how would you determine your budget priorities if you were the board members? What would you look to make the budget cuts? Are there any areas that you would not consider any cutting? Just your general thoughts if you are going to manage reduced budgets for the school.
Great question. Now, the budget is a really, really important issue. I've served on the Operating Budget Review Committee for the past two years, which is the group that advises the board on budget issues. And when you serve in that capacity, you see how complicated the budget is. We're over $1 billion for the FY '23, which is amazing. And we, you know, the process, I'll explain the process a little bit. Is the superintendent puts together a request, and it goes to the board, and the board decides to adjust. And they take a final number, and they ask the county council and the county executive to fund it. And then the county executive looks at all of their priorities for the county, and they come back with a number. And then the council can adjust, and then it goes back to the board. So the number that the board will get is going to be an increase from last year, but it's less than they asked for. And that's just, it happens every year. And that's just a factor of, we just have so many critical needs. We have so many needs. We need to hire more staff. We need to hire more special educators, more social workers, more teachers, more lunchroom workers. We need more buses, more bus drivers. I mean, these are just fundamental parts of the budget that we need. Additionally, we need to continue growing programs which take up more times of the budget. And it becomes a matter of balancing priorities when the board has to make those tough choices. Another factor which not a lot of voters know about is the blueprint for Maryland's future, which is this package of laws that the state legislature passed last year. The governor vetoed it, it was overridden, and now it's the law. And these are mandates that not just us, but every district in the state will have to follow. There's a floor, we'll have to pay our teachers a certain level, which will cost more money from the budget. So it's only getting more and more complicated, much more difficult to make these budgets work. Ultimately, we just need more money from the county. I think that's the bottom line. But until we get to that point where we have all the resources, we have to make these tough choices.
Thanks. Yes, I agree with Dan. We need more money, unfortunately. And number one, we really try to get together people to say, hey, we do prioritize education, and we want it to be funded. You know, every year, they have to spend a certain amount, you know, in the maintenance of effort. And then every year, we're growing, you know, we're kind of, we're exceeding it. We're running behind in a lot of ways. I know every year, we don't get what we want, what we need. So my hope would be to prioritize things that are going to directly impact our students and teachers in the classroom. I feel like special education has been kind of ignored a lot of years, not getting what they need. And that's not a niche group. It affects everybody in the whole school when we're failing some of our students, especially students with special needs. And, yeah, I hate to pit any group against another, and I feel like sometimes that does happen to kind of draw the attention away from, you know, some of the failings we have in our county. We don't trust, you know, that if taxes were going to be raised, we don't trust that that's going to actually go to education. And I feel like maybe we would be willing to pay more if we knew that it was going to go. You know, the lottery money or the gambling, you know, casino money was supposed to go to education, but, you know, what ends up happening is it gets taken somewhere else out of there. So I think we need to work to establish that trust so that we can actually get more funding. Thanks.
So in terms of the budget, I do think that we are in a situation right now where clearly we are in a crisis with terms of staffing and teachers. We don't, we clearly don't have enough teachers and staffing. We have to make sure we keep that pipeline strong between the staffing and administration. I am concerned about the inflation and how that's going to affect the budget. We have to be very, very concerned about that, and nobody's really talking about that. But it is going to have an effect on what we're doing now. We may be in a situation where we're always having to choose priorities, but the priorities may be chosen for us in terms of deferred maintenance on buildings and that sort of thing, as well as the crisis that we face now with our overcrowding and our, we're not, we don't have enough staffing to manage. And it is correct that for those that are left behind to carry the weight when there is missing employees and so forth, it's making it more difficult. So the budget issues are going to be, they're very, they're getting more crucial every year as the requests go up. But some of the issues may not be ones that we'll be able to pick from. I mean, the deferred maintenance and things like that are going to have to be addressed ultimately. So it's going to take some very serious focus on the budget to make sure that we have a strong system.
I think that I can say all touch a very good point. I think personally, I think as a candidate, I, because I really care about the staff shortage issue, this also related to the inflation, even though current, you know, put a 10% salary increase, but inflation is 8%, it doesn't help much. So how do we have enough incentive? More importantly, creating a very supportive environment to keep sustaining, and those teachers can, and recruiting a new teacher. That's really need to be the HR and the school system as a whole take a holistic approach. I think if the school, it's only look at the short term. We are more like operating in emergency mode. I more look at, that's look at a couple of years and project a couple of years ahead. What's the bottleneck, right? For example, the devices. Do you think we need a one-to-one, still the device ratio? Is that a benefit for all of us? Or we can do differently? And still can achieve the same effective or even better in terms of mental health, not all screen time all the time, right? And also transportation. You know the bus strike, the whole thing issue. So the transportation cost is going up as well. So we also need to look at that aspect of, how can we balance all this cost? And I totally agree, the all resources, the priority should be go to classroom. That's our core mission. That's our core mission to teach your kids and put the resources on the right spot. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so budget cuts are hard. One of the things I don't like about what happens in the boardroom with respect to the budget is this idea that we put forth this amazing budget, and then we talk about it not being funded as a budget cut. Because I think then people panic, and they're afraid that their students are going to lose their favorite programs. I remember being in the boardroom two years ago, and, you know, it was, you know, people were afraid that AP classes were going to be cut or something like that. And it's like, well, that's not what the budget cuts are. It's a cut from our ideal, right? The budget goes up every year. And so I think our core programs will be maintained. And so I always worry about that when we talk about these budget cuts and tightening, you know, our belts types of things. But it's true, we could, to really be the school system, we want to be, we need better funding. I saw just this morning a Twitter from, a tweet from a Howard Times that, you know, the Board of Education is asking the county council for more money. They're using that initiative. And I think that's a really important thing for board members to do. I think inflation is going to be a really big key. And but I really think that part of the key also is to have smarter policies. The discussion about one-to-one devices. I think we need to have that. Can we afford one-to-one devices? Are they worth the cost? Redistricting, like, I really don't think that it balanced socioeconomic. It was proposed to balance socioeconomic, but it was expensive. And there were better moves, like in my neighborhood, that would have balanced socioeconomic and saved three buses. I think three buses is a fair amount of money, actually, that could have been poured back into things like teacher salaries or reducing class sizes. And, you know, I think special education is actually a really big area for this. We under-identify. For every two students we have in special education, there's one that's not identified. And that's really important with the budget. I testified on this numerous times because there is more money from the state to educate special education students than regular students because it requires more money. more money. And we aren't getting that money because we don't identify them. So we need to identify them, because we have to educate them whether they're identified or not. And so that, to me, is a really important issue, is really addressing smarter policies. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So I really appreciate that you actually get so very well prepared today, and the all agree answers. But I did observe one subtle thing is that sometimes you shift away from the questions. I realize maybe you're so skillful, you want to speak of mine, so address something else, that is fine. But in the meantime, if you want us to repeat the question for you, we can do that, because we gave the question once, and all of you start talking, then later, then probably you got distracted somehow. So if that's the case, let us know, we'll repeat that for you. We're here to support you. We're here to make you shine. You're the stars today. We just support you. Okay? Now, the next question, we'll start with Matt, right? So this is question number four. So, "School safety is a high priority for parents and students. What is your position on school resource officer, SRO, I think? I've heard numerous times. What's your position on school resource officers? Do you support to remove or keep SRO in Howard County Public Schools, and why?" Start with you, Matt.
Thank you. Um, feelings about this, and it was something that personally hasn't been something that I've, you know, had any good or bad, you know, any strong experiences with. But looking into it a bit, I, you know, you hear both sides. I felt like what the county executive put forward in April of last year seemed like a good compromise. Having school resource officers, having them with, you know, not wearing the normal uniforms that might be a little bit frightening or, you know, concerning to folks who've not had a good experience with law enforcement. And having them, you know, be there as part of the school community, but not there for discipline. Discipline is the matter of the school administration. My middle school, where my daughter goes, was one of the few middle schools that had an SRO. They don't this year. Prior to those years, before the pandemic, they had a lot of incidents. They had a lot of suspensions and things. And this year, they haven't. Whereas a lot of other schools are having a lot of struggles this year. Now, I don't know, I don't think it's actually related to the SRO though. I think the main thing is, for the first time in many, many years, that school is under capacity. Shocking, you know? They're not all on top of each other. They're not running heads. But I definitely believe that school security is not a one-person job. It's going to depend on every single person in the building to make sure that we're safe. The kids, the teachers, everybody needs to be aware of their fellow classmates, kids. We don't want anybody falling through the cracks. We don't want anybody that's, you know, shows that they may be a danger. We need to be proactive and not just reactive. Thanks.
So as far as the SRO officers, I feel that it is important that they be in the schools for safety. I believe they should be in the middle school and the high school as well. They are selected. They are, have a very rigorous training program that they go through. I think it is a wonderful opportunity for students to interact with some form of law enforcement outside of a crisis, to get to know the officers. These officers are mothers and fathers and sisters and brothers. They are part of our community, and they are there to primarily, first and foremost, keep things from coming into the school. And they're not really, they have special training to de-escalate. And I think our, you know, our principal Motley from Athleton High School says that it's a missed opportunity for students not to interface with an SRO, and get to know them as human beings, and appreciate the security that they bring to the school. Just like we're concerned about portables outside, I do think it's just important that we not have a soft target for the schools. I think they need some, there needs to be somebody there protecting the schools. You know, things happen very, very quickly. And there is, to make the case that somebody's concerned about the SRO and what their appearance is, I mean, if you have a thousand students or something over, you know, 1,000 to 1,500 students, and you have one officer in the school, I don't think that's concerning. If you go to a ballpark, or concert, or what have you, you know, you have the same kind of support there. So it is, it is a, it's an enhancement that I do support completely.
So I tried to give a background yesterday, and today I have a four-day first aid training. So look at the instance, at the, we have multiple instance at a school. If something happened, who is the most qualified to help the victim? Who is the best person to contact, you know, emergency crew? So I think that SRO is probably the best, do the job. So we need somebody who know how to do and quickly react. I look at it more as a first responder. So with their presence, I mean, they can make sure administration do their job, teacher do their job, and they have designated people to take care of if something coming up. It's almost like fire, you gotta need to be firefighting in place to make sure it doesn't spread. That's the role. And so that's why it becomes my platform as well, supporting the SRO in keeping the middle school and the high school. But if it's training-related, we can just separate it. But if we remove the SRO, I think it's not a good approach to do that. So, thank you.
I like our moderator a lot, so I want to make sure I answer the questions spot-on for him. And so I just want to make it clear that I support keeping SROs in the school. But I also feel like this issue is a bit of distraction. It's divisive, for one thing, right? Like, you can see it on Facebook feeds all the time. And I think it's a distraction because one SRO in the school can't address our school safety problems. One SRO cannot break up a fight. You see that if you've seen some of the videos, like the Instagram page that has all the fights for the, you know, at the school systems, the video, the one that was in the news from Howard High earlier this year. You can't do it with one SRO. And so you're asking our administrators, you're asking our teachers, you may even be asking students to get involved to break up fights. SROs are reactive, and we need to be proactive about school safety. We need to do more to make sure that no child has to see a fight in school. And I can say, my son's school, he talked about it, it's Wild Lake Middle School, it's our newest middle school. It's beautiful, it's gorgeous. It's not over capacity. They had an SRO, everyone loved her. She was a female SRO. That's another thing, our SROs need to be representative. There was a picture of the SROs recently. It was all men, right? Like, where are our female SROs, right? If you want to talk about role models, we need to make sure they're representative of race, gender, every way. But Wild Lake Middle School has had problems with safety this year. They don't have an SRO. But I don't think that if we had one SRO there, it would prevent some of these problems. We need to make sure those kids want to come to school every day, right? That they feel safe to come to school every day, because I didn't know too many kids who aren't in school because they're afraid for their safety. And that really needs to end. And we need a program to be proactive in that way. Thank you.
So the SRO question is tough, and I will answer it. But first, I think the real question is how do we keep our kids safe in school? That's the question. It's not SRO, no SRO, it's how do we keep the kids safe? So then the question is, what are we worried about? What are the risks? And we identify those risks, and we find the right solution. If we're worried about fights in the schools, if we're worried about discipline issues in the schools, I think that's a job for school employees. I don't think it's about SROs or no SROs. It's about what's the right tool for the job? What's the right approach? And we can have school employees who are dedicated to security, who are capable, who understand how to de-escalate, who understand how to work with children. And they won't have the power to arrest, but we don't need to criminalize behavior of our children. When a police officer, when SRO breaks up a fight in school, that child is charged with a crime. It's not about suspension or, you know, it can happen, sorry, you rattled me by commenting. I'm sorry, I should be better than that. The issue is, what's the right tool for the job? And if we're worried about fights, if we're worried about keeping our kids safe, the way we do it, the SRO is too late. We need to be investing in that student years beforehand, with social workers, with counselors, with enough paraeducators, with enough teachers, that they get the small class size, so that child is cared for, so that whatever issue years from now will cause a fight, we address those issues beforehand. So no, I don't think we need SROs, but I think we need more security and better security. But I think they need HCPSS employees that we train, that we control, we, the board, controls, not through an MOU, but through our employees, who we hire specifically, who we choose, who we train, who we discipline and fire if they're not doing the job. Parents need better security in the schools, and I think that's the right approach. So that, I think, is the real question we need to answer. Thanks.
Very good. A lot of good questions come from the audience, too, so hopefully we can have time to ask them. And now we're going to go to our last questions, which we kind of, in this section two, we'll start with Trudy, right? "If you were selected, elected as a BOE member, what would be your top two, two, three priorities and why?"
The top?
Two, two, three priorities.
Oh, two, two, three, okay. So, thank you for the question. As I've said before, I think the core education is my top priority, to focus on the core education, making sure that every student is prepared for their next chapter. The, we want to keep schools safe. I think that parents expect, when they are sending their children to school, that they are getting a core education in a safe environment, and that's their expectation. And we should provide no less. There are, I do think it's very important that we keep students in their neighborhood schools, where their support systems are there, their community is there, family and friends' support system is there. And I think it's very important to support our teachers, that they're not overburdened with a lot of other things. We've talked about it today. You know, they're not, they're not there to manage fights in school and so forth. I mean, they need to really be supported so that they can focus just on their core education, and make sure that their students are, that will go a long way, I think, to helping with the issues in school, if we can just keep people focused on these things. So those would be my top priorities. Thank you.
So my top priority, first one, is to address the staff shortage problem. I think the most important thing for a school system to listen at the school level, from the classroom, what they truly need. So, for example, the, when I decided to run, I talked to the principal, really, the salary is one thing, another is the lack of supporting system. When they don't have enough paraeducator, the supporting system, we see a lot more work, the teachers are really burnt out. So how can we address the way enough financial support as well as in classroom, and to rebuild the community support, so make sure the school can run, you know, less stress on the students, on the teachers? So, and also the HR, we definitely need to do a better job to attract talents, make sure the hiring timing is good enough, from the left behind by the neighboring counties. So we need to do a much better job. The second one is about the school infrastructure, we already talked about. We have a good role model there, Wild Lake Middle School, we can have a priority, we can do a good job right there. The third one is mental health, social emotional well-being. I already know, because the COVID, people really lack of in-person communication, that causes a lot of problems. So if I elected, I really have emphasized, how can we create a program, more in-person, more hands-on, more teamwork among the students, not just sitting in the classroom. But I have a scouting background. I'm so blessed to see the scouting they endure, even during the COVID. They have in-person, they make mistakes, they learn from the hands-on. I want that similar model happen to the school. It doesn't cost a lot, but it will be beneficial for all students. Thank you.
So I've talked about some of my priorities already, because they come up first, because they're what I'm most excited about. And I think school capacity, to me, is a really big one, but I've already talked about it, so I'm not going to, like, inundate you with school capacity. The other, like, priority for me is really smart policies, right? And this actually hits on a lot of different places. You mentioned it in the last answer. You know, we need a smart policy on one-to-one devices. Maybe it's not even a policy on one-to-one devices, but a smart policy on devices, one that ensures that kids who need devices at home have them, and that, you know, we can have a cutting-edge education system, but that doesn't have the cost, doesn't have the issues of Chromebooks that, you know, my son's Chromebook was only two years old. He had a Chromebook, a school-issued Chromebook, because of a 504 plan, before the pandemic. And at the end of the pandemic, he couldn't take his assessments on that Chromebook. It was only two years old, and he couldn't take his assessments, right? So we really need to talk about these things and have smart policies. Other smart policies, school start times, making sure our kids are as fresh as possible by starting school at appropriate time, which currently, many kids are starting school way too early, and then really struggling in their first period classes. Smart policies on special education, which I mentioned, smart policies on redistricting, right? Ensuring that the money is spent on educating our children, and doing that most cost-effectively, balancing all these things, balancing the socioeconomics, balancing all these things, but doing it in the most fiscally responsible way possible. And so that's what I mean by smart policies. And then using those resources to address things like the staffing shortage, right, which we really very much need to address, right? We need to address, like, how little our paraeducators make, because, you know, most any job is more attractive than being a paraeducator, unless you really love working with the kids. And so I think that's, you know, those are my two big things. Thank you.
So one really big priority we need to focus on is recovering from the pandemic. I think, you know, it's been three, this is the third school year we've been impacted. And I think it's going to take several years, multiple years, to really recover. You know, we started the year back to normal, back in the schools, business as usual. It hasn't been business as usual. Some kids are doing great. Other kids are very visibly suffering, and other kids are very quietly suffering. We need to make sure that every school is, you know, identifies the needs they have. This is going to be a critical summer, because next year, we can't just go back and pretend we're back to normal. We need to look at each school. Each school needs a really comprehensive plan. We need to look at the data. What are we missing? What are the gaps? What happened this year with discipline in every school? What happened with, you talked to school council, the number of suicide reports is shocking. You know, COVID is not over. We need to make sure each school is getting what they need, so that each child is getting what they need. We can't just pretend we're back to normal because the kids are in the building. So that's first. Second, we need a real dedicated focus on our educators. When you cut away everything else, we want the best schools, we need the best teachers. It just comes down to a teacher and a child and that relationship, and that's where the learning happens. So we need to hire the best. We need to take a great young teacher with a lot of potential and teach them their craft. And that happens through mentoring, and observation, and feedback. Right now, we don't do hardly any of that. The teachers don't have time. Maybe a young teacher, first-year teacher's assigned a mentor, but that mentor doesn't have any time to observe. It all happens haphazardly. We can't do that. If we want the best, we need to train the best teachers. And we need to keep the best. And it's not just salary, although we do need competitive salaries. We really need to provide an environment where the teachers feel empowered to, when they have great ideas, the schools give them the freedom to execute those ideas, where they feel supported by their principals and the community. That's how we really get results, is we bring the best teachers in here, and we give them what they need.
So number one, I'd say, our funding, making sure that we have what we need, and that we're using it responsibly, making sure we have those buildings, those teachers, and other support staff, and the materials to actually teach our children, and to give them those experiences we would expect out of a world-class school system. Number two, make sure we have the supports that we need, mental health supports, support for students who learn differently, support for, you know, advanced learners, support for talent spotting, and support for our teachers, and their mental health, and their development, and their growth as teachers. And I think we're going to need to partner up with community organizations to help us with this, and other departments within our county. It shouldn't all fall on the school system. And then third, it's an easy one, right? By comparison, I think we could do a lot better job communicating as a school system with all our community, with our parents. I had a neighbor in my community, they had no idea that we were supposed to have school on President's Day, because that was a change that was made in a year. We're not getting information that's essential out in other languages besides English. You know, sometimes you can go to the website, and you can click a button, but those need-to-know, you know, urgent information blasts are not coming out in the languages that they need to come out in, so that everybody knows what's going on. And I still even have people who, English is their first language, coming to me and asking, do we have school on Monday? Is school off? You know, because we've had a lot of changes. And I think that's something that we can do, and hopefully will get done. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much for addressing all these questions, one by one. So now we are going to start our session floor now to the audience who are here. So now we are going to start our session floor now to the audience who are here, who wants to ask a question. If you want to, can you raise your hand and we will address question in the floor? If nobody raised, okay, we have first person, you can stand up maybe, ask your question.
So if you were elected as CEO, remember, what would you, what do you see the HCS as in four years? How would you see the HCS as in four years?
Okay.
So you want to address to anyone?
Or any of the candidates want?
To all. If they can share their individual opinions.
I can volunteer to answer first. So if I look at the four years, first, I think of the money, the way how we spend the money will be more better way to spend money. Right now, I feel like we see a big number, but I didn't see the immediate benefits. So I want to see the money really channel to where we need it, right? Staff shortage, the school infrastructure and the mental health. We want to see the solid results, measurable results. So, and then our county is getting more diverse. So how do we utilize the diversity in our county to maximize, to learn each other, for the students to they learn each other, really become a, actually a global citizenship? It's good for them in the long term and pick up the other languages. So they give them more world language options because the virtual learning is have positive with negative, but we definitely can maximize the benefits of that. So how can we use a smarter way technology to maximize more opportunity to the students? We definitely can do better. Thank you.
And I will go second to keep the order going. So four years from now, I, you know, I think we will have recovered from the pandemic as much as it might not seem like it right now. I think we will have recovered and I think our teachers will have made that happen. And I hope that four years from now, we'll be really grateful for our teachers for that. I really hope four years from now, we're actually, we're going to be like cutting ribbons on a bunch of new schools, right? I really hope that in four years, we're going to be able to see that because we so badly need it. And I think, you know, universally, you hear it here today. So I hope that whoever is elected can affect that change because we so badly need it. Other things that I imagine in four years, I think we will still have a stellar graduation rate. I think we will still have stellar students, we will still be sending stellar students to the best universities. And, you know, I think we will continue to maintain that. I think that it's going, I'm hoping that it'll be, you know, better each year going forward. I do think that, you know, inflation often precedes a recession and that might be tough. And so, you know, realistically, like we really need to consider that. But I think we'll be in a better place than we are today and because we won't be recovering from the pandemic anymore.
I would hope in four years from now, we have what's just considered universally the best schools in Maryland. I would love us to be the school district that every young teacher wants to come teaching when they graduate in College Park or wherever they're graduating from. They want to come here because we have the best district. I want our schools to be places where our parents and our children feel like their kids are going to be safe and nurtured and really understood by their teachers, where every child who has an IEP is getting the resources they need in the special ed program. I'd love to see a school where we have para educators back in our kindergartens, which was stripped from the budget a few years ago. So the kids get that good first start of how to be a student in a school. I'd love us to see, to be a district where we just don't barely have one nurse for every school, but we have a pool of nurses who can not just be in every school, but who can really dedicate time and resources on kids with special health needs, like our type one diabetes kids or, you know, the handful of kids who have really difficult medical issues. I'd love us to be a district that's renowned for our mental health that we provide our kids, where it's not just, you know, one social worker for 500 kids, but it's really enough resources and programs that kids can get the help they need so it doesn't turn into behavior problems, it doesn't turn into cries for help, issues that are addressed in the classroom and in the school building. And I'd love us to be a district where the academic performance of our kids is just top-notch, where we are a district that sends our kids to the best schools that the kids want to go to, that the parents are so happy, that people are fighting to move to Howard County because they know this is where you want to be if you care about your kid's future.
Hi. So Julie, can I steal a little bit of my answer? I'm hoping in four years, we have concrete plans for new schools at every level, that we have concrete plans for high school 14 in Elbridge. I just learned the other day that with the changes to the council manager districts there, it's going to be zero high schools in District One, zero. I hope that we can continue to work and improve on all those metrics that show if we are living up to our ideals, if we are having an excellent education for every student in our schools. As a preschool person, I'm an assistant teacher of preschool, you know, we're going to be having more preschool as part of our educational system with these new things coming up. I hope to see that opportunity available to everybody and having high-quality preschool that is going to help our kids to be prepared for school when they get to kindergarten. And I hope to see us as a community find a way to work together and to not have to constantly be fighting against one another for minimal resources. We need to grow the pie because we all want the same things. Maybe not all in the, you know, we don't have the same ideas of how to get there, but we want the same things. We want an excellent education for our kids. We want Howard County to be a phenomenal place to live and to grow. And I, that's my hope for the next four years. Thanks.
Okay. Now, Sergeant Brown, Leno, did you say one of the?
Oh, we have another candidate. Are you, do you want to come in here? We just put another chair maybe, I just noticed. Jackie.
Jackie McQuaid.
Thank you, Jackie. Which way?
We should say it's a.
You have another question. So before you, I'm sorry, before you go, let me say, so we're going to just do the same thing, Jackie, then. You've probably been here for a while, you know how this thing runs.
No, I just popped in.
Oh, you have two minutes to answer a question.
Okay.
They have a red, yellow and blue, uh, green. Green is one minute and yellow is 15 seconds to go. Then the red is, yeah, basically. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so no question. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And the first, I need to thank you guys, you know, either be a candidate, it's busy, stressful, you know? It's like 24 hours job for you guys. And thank you guys taking time and serve the community. I very appreciate it. And the second, we are, I have focus, you know? I'm very, very focused at the whole kind of public school, you know? And that is why I'm like many of the, I'm the first generation of this country. And I hope this country better, you know? We don't want this country poor down. And education is also is very important for this country, you know? Every country focuses on education, that means have a bright future. So, back to my question, very easy. Right now it's 10, you guys is already excited, okay? You are already in the border meeting room. And the right issue is the new high school is already built up. You need a decision, is redistricting. Next question is you need a whole country-wide redistrict or just near this high school? I need a one-by-one answer. Large size or small size?
Thank, I'm sorry, can you just repeat what you just said, the last, I didn't hear your last sentence?
Have a high school already built, you are all in the border room.
Yes.
Large, redistrict. You need a country-wide redistrict or just near this high school, small-size redistrict?
You mean county-wide?
Yes. County-wide or just a?
Yeah, so there's a new high school is built, what are you going to do, like we, there's a need for redistricting. So what's your way of redistricting, whether it's neighborhood or it's a whole county-wide redistrict, right?
Yes, that's one.
Okay. I don't know if we have two minutes for everybody, so keep your, also succeed because we do have a lot of questions.
Yes, or no, is it large size or small size?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You don't have full two minutes, if you can keep as short as possible.
You don't have to use two.
Yeah, you don't have to. Because we have a lot of question, we probably, other people wants to ask, I want to make sure all these questions get to us. So how, how you?
Whoever wants to talk.
Talk first.
I need, I asked.
I can go first.
Six.
Or if you'd like to go first since, would you prefer to go first since you?
I have no problem. I have no problem. I, as a matter of fact, I was just looking at the school capacity data and assessing just where we are. And there are certain corners of the county that, where there's overcapacity even in the elementary schools. And so I think that to avoid constant redistricting because everyone wants to move into Howard County, that we need to pay more attention to the long-range predictions of housing in the county. Many schools are constrained because they have met the capacity. So they could not have any more students there. So I think it would depend on where the school is, where the school is proposed and who would be affected as to whether or not there would need to be a county-wide redistricting or if it would be a localized redistricting. I don't think you can do a hypothetical because there are too many variations.
So your answer is county-wide?
No, my answer is depends on where the school is located. So if the, if the school is in the western Howard County, it would not make much sense, right? But if it's in central Howard County, then, you know, so the location makes a huge difference. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. So it's follow this way?
It's easier.
Okay. So I think the board already voted, it's pretty much, you know, at this time, because of school utilization, we know school, where the population grow more significant, that's the purpose, they want to put a new school there. So that's absorb, you know, additional overcapacity. I think it's make sense for now. I think a board make the right decision, try to do local redistricting because nobody want to, every two years, we do redistricting everywhere. The end of the day is how can we minimize? We try to build the capacity, but at the same time, we try to minimize the redistricting. So I think that's the purpose. So I mean, for the utilization purpose, we, if we try to put more school, we will follow that model, try to absorb, release the pressure and then adding more and more. So, yeah, thank you.
So I find this question to be really a difficult one because, you know, we currently don't have an entire high school's worth of students sitting right next to the new high school, right? Just in one school, right? We've pushed the students all throughout the entire county, right? Like we've, we've tried to distribute that capacity so that no school has a higher burden, even though Howard High has a higher burden, and has for a long time. But we don't have an entire school's worth of kids at Howard High that can just fill the next high school, right? And so it almost has to be, like as much as we can say like, oh, we'd like it to just be local, it almost has to be county-wide, right? So, you know, I think the current plan, like, you know, some of the talk I've heard is like, well, Athleton wouldn't be involved, which Athleton's our high school. And I'm like, well, how can that not be like, oh, I'm like, half the kids are on the other side of 29. How, they, they so kind of, they're near Hammond High School, there'll be seats at Hammond High School. How are we not going to be affected? And so I really think, you know, it's a very difficult question because you really are going to have to move a lot of kids to balance that capacity out because we pushed so many all over the place, right? And I think the other thing is, we've held off the last two years and not had redistricting. But that means there's a lot of schools that due to development are increasing in capacity and we're going to have to address that as well and many that are forecasted. Like I think my elementary school is expected to be at 160% capacity, I think in four years. We're currently below 100%, but that's due to the development. Do you wait until it's at 160% to address it? Do you wait two years when you're halfway in between? Or since we're doing redistricting this year, do you try to address it this year? You know, so I think, you know, maybe doing it this year so we don't have to do this as frequently is actually a good thing, right? And so I find it a really difficult question because I don't think it's, I don't think it's as simple as just, just doing it around that new school. And so, thank you. Sorry, I did take the two minutes. Sorry.
I hate to answer a yes or no question with it depends, but I think it is really complicated. I think, you know, we have schools in the wrong places now. Because they were built decades ago and there've been decades of housing growth, you know, based on county policies of people, made by people who are long retired and we're dealing with that today. So it's really, really challenging, but I think there's a couple of things we need to do. We need to make sure that we're balanced in how we redistrict. Right now, Policy 6010 has a few factors. It has facility utilization, which is capacity, it has community stability, which means let's use a scalpel and not a chainsaw when we're going in there to make these changes. And finally, demographics balancing, which I think is important to make sure we have representative schools across the county. I think we need to make sure we have the right balance. And I really think we need to approach it realistically in that it's really impactful for parents and really, really impactful for our kids. I mean, kids adjust, kids do fine, but it's a big change in the daily lives of everyone impacted. I think the board needs to acknowledge that and be much more transparent in how they make these decisions with much better processes for community input so that we can build trust in the process instead of having what in 2019 was a terrible exercise for the whole community. I don't think anybody's happy with how 2019 turned out. And a lot of that is, we need to make sure we're basing it on the data and using, you know, we hire these fancy consultants and they come to the plan and we throw it away and mix it all up for the last minute. That's a terrible way to make major decisions that impact people's lives. So, I'm sorry, I can't answer yes or no, but I think we need to be really thoughtful and careful and try to anticipate problems so we're not just fixing this one high school, but oh, by the way, we're going to have another elementary school coming online in next year, we're going to have to do it all over again. Let's try to think holistically about capacity.
Yeah, it's, they like, the things that it's, they already vote it's not going to be county-wide, however, I have to tell you, all the seats we're adding in high schools are in the current Hammond High School District and that's not the number one most overcrowded school. I mean, we tried really hard in my part of the county to advocate for building that high school in Elbridge, weren't successful. So it's going to be challenging, there's going to be more people getting moved than we could have had if we had a different location. But my hope is that it'll be what we need to get the job done, that we can make sure the seeds make sense. So it's going to not just be some high school, but there will be some, you know, maybe middle school and elementary schools that will be affected. And I would just say, make sure this summer that you keep an eye on what's going on and then, you know, you won't be surprised about what's happening. It's unfortunate that's when it has to be over the summer when we got other things to do, but that's what we ought to do, so.
So this is one of my platforms. I do think it's very important for communities to be able to stay together, even, you know, people, the children need to have their neighborhood schools. And also talking about the feeders, if there is movement, we do have to be very, very careful about the feeders. We don't want to put, you know, four or five children separated from their community that go to another school and so forth. So I would be focused on neighborhood schools and keeping those together. And I think we also have to have some, some creative things in terms of the buildings and so forth to help alleviate some of the stress, the pressure on the schools. But I would not go for county-wide. I think that the communities need to stay together, the children need to stay together in their community, with their community.
Thank you.
No, we just one last question.
Oh, before, before we do that, oh, before we do, hold on.
We will not take any floor questions just because of time limit, but we do want maybe cover one last question from the audience, which is in the paper, just one minute maybe.
So we have five minutes to go. So we ran the rooms here. So we're going to, we're going to. So we're going to change agenda. We just talked about that. Jackie, right? Jackie, you're here late because whatever reason, we didn't do a good job to invite you, but we will give you the chance for the two-minute statements, but you can tell us, just like everyone else, and tell us who you are, your background, and.
Thank you for being so gracious because I, you know, I said, I've got to go because I want to know. But anyway.
All right, thank you.
I'm Jackie McCoy and I've lived in Howard County for 25 years. I've lived in Maryland for 40. Three of my adult children attended Howard County schools and graduated. One at the top of his class, all the way up through college, and one who had challenges. So I'm familiar with that. I'm also dyslexic and I'm the only person in this race who is an educator. I've taught in city and county schools and so, and I've taught in private schools. So I've had a lot of experience. I've been a tutor and my degree is mechanical engineering from University of Maryland. And I have a master's degree in secondary education from Johns Hopkins. And so I'm truly dedicated to education and I think I bring a perspective that no one else in this race has because I struggled as a student and I have had, I have a child who struggles as an adult. And so I know that and I also know the students who thrive, who are in the gifted and talented programs. And so I think I have a perspective and an ability to listen to everyone. I don't have a hidden agenda. I just want what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you all of you. Especially thank you all six right now, wonderful candidates. Thank you, Trudy, Jackie, Lingfeng, Julie, Dem, and Mac. Thank you for your coming, you know? This is such an honor to invite them to come into our forum, right? This is great. And thank you for your wonderful introduction and QA sessions. I really enjoyed that and I learned a lot from you guys. So let's give them another round of applause. And BOE members, I think they play significant roles in our lives, right? Our neighborhood schools, our kids, actually the education for our next generations are all depend on their intelligence, their wisdom, right? Their kindness, their responsibilities, their honesty. So I think injustice is also very important. So I think they are very, very important roles in our lives. So I also hope all the elected BOE members will continue to listening to us, representing to our, you know, voices and making the decisions and the choices beneficial for our kids, for our next generations. So today, you know, it is such a great forum. I don't have another words to, you know, say more about that. It's wonderful. So I want, I just want to, I hope and wish of you have a great campaign and wish you all good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, finally, I think, you know, Dr. Li Ming and me will acknowledge, you know, all this, you know, people helped today. I would like to thank you for the six great candidates and we would like to also thank you our youth ambassadors, the young kids here to, you know? And also thank you, our, all the volunteers, you know, work to make this forum happen. And thank you for all the audience coming here today. It's raining days, terrible day, Saturday morning, but you're coming here to support us. And also thank you for your great questions. Thank you for your participations and thank you again. Thank you.
So Dr. Li, Sergeant Brown.
Yeah, I want to make announcement. We have good news. Due to the weather, the following event, they are all canceled in this room. Take in this room and hear the call. So that's good news. So you can't forget what anyone. Before I forget, I'm sorry, before I forget, I really want to recognize all the school officials and parent volunteers who make this wonderful event possible, start from planning Richard and then all others, the organization committees and the volunteers today and the check-in and all our wonderful photographers and everybody. And of course, I really appreciate your time and willingness to come in this forum. So that's all I want to say. We can stay as long as we want. Thank you.
You can feel free to go if you want to stay, chat, mingle, do whatever you want to.
Yeah, if the candidates you are available.